Call the meeting in order and welcome everyone to the City of Kalispell's June 16, 2025 council meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Dowd.
Here.
Counselor Fisher. Counselor Hunter.
Here.
Counselor Dolman.
Here.
Counselor Graham.
Here.
Counselor Nunnally.
Here.
Counselor Carlson.
Here.
Counselor Gabrielle. Mayor Johnson.
Here. Please rise from the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Dowd, can you move us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the council for approval of the agenda, Mr. Dowd. Excuse me, Your Honor, I move the agenda as published.
Second.
If I may ask, if we could amend the agenda to include item under, after item number J, to go into executive session under Montana code annotated to discuss matters of individual privacy?
I so amended. I'll take the friendly amendment. Okay. Second on the amended agenda, adding item J. All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda has one item this evening, which are the council minutes from the May 12 and May 19 meetings. Is there any public comment on either of those two council minutes? It's done. Look to council for a motion. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Second. Ms. Carlson, all in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. First item this evening is a committee report from the Kalispell Business Improvement District, the work plan and budget.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Jamie Keller with the Kalispell Business Improvement District, and we are here this evening to present the budget with a couple of board members. So this year, we have anticipated revenue of $136,800, with expected expenses nearing $133,378. And I will give you Nicole Peterson to present some of the items that are on page three.
Thank you. Good evening. Part of our budget, we have organizational and administrative fees. That totals $48,878. This portion of the BID budget supports core administrative needs that keep our district running. It covers essentials like liability insurance, office supplies, financial management, professional developmental conference, development conferences, storage for downtown holiday decor, and it also funds full-time leadership directors who helps guide and implement the bid programs and initiatives throughout the year. Next up, we have Marshall Neuss.
We have a maintenance budget of $35,000, which is all of the really glamorous stuff that goes on in downtown. We have a dedicated team of maintenance people who do their best to keep the flowers water, the trees water, the sidewalks free of weeds, and picking up litter and doing all of those behind-the-scenes jobs that really make our Downtown Business Improvement District a more attractive, more vibrant place for our citizens and visitors to come and enjoy and do business, and a better place to own property and a better place to do business. Budget this year, $35,000.
You can see we brought almost the whole committee tonight. Also, as part of our budget, we've got some money set aside for communications and marketing. Again, as many of you might remember, with the Downtown Business Improvement District, we're representing the property owners. And believe it or not, the tax records are about six months behind, so we rely pretty heavily on our communications, actually, pretty heavily on Jamie Keller to do that communications. But through that marketing, we're trying to get some more folks downtown. So communicating within the bid and then also marketing to get folks outside of the bid to do more business and development inside our district. Our development activity is a bucket that we look to, that's the $5,000, and that's what we look to grow programs that maybe we haven't planned for. And these would be programs to give us a little bit more flexibility where there's unexpected repairs needed for the golf cart and some of the other, as Marshall said, glamorous parts of the job downtown. Light poles, fixing light poles. Our facade improvement grants, as many of you might remember, this is the really exciting program that we've got this year. And we've revamped that. So the $25,000 you see represents $20,000 that was earmarked from the TIF fund and an additional $5,000 that we've retained within our budget to support that program. Just with our initial, and again, this is just, this isn't the report on what has happened, but the report to get you excited about what will happen. But just the initial outlay of marketing and communications to the folks, we've got six property owners who are interested in taking part of that property improvement with the facade improvement grants. Jamie, I'm going to let you talk about the event sponsorship and with the bid.
So event sponsorships this year, the budget is $1,000, and this will go toward any organization that requests a sponsorship for their downtown event that will help promote business and bring folks downtown to enjoy.
All right, and the last two areas that are utilizing parts of our budget are holiday lighting and the summer flowers. Holiday lighting accounts for $5,000 of the budget. Each holiday season, we bring festive spirit and heart to the downtown by illuminating the streets with lighting and seasonal decor. These decorations help light up the space, especially in the winter as we don't have, you know, decreased sunlight. We want to bring more light and more cheer to the downtown area so that pedestrians and people continue to shop downtown, and it brings just a better atmosphere. Summer flowers, each year, we purchase, install, and maintain 175 flower baskets. This accounts for $10,000 of our budget. Corner planners are placed throughout the downtown Kalispell area, and the flower baskets are hung off of the light posts. The vibrant colors displayed enhance charm and beauty of our downtown streets, creating a bright and welcoming environment for residents, visitors, and local businesses.
Can we answer any questions?
Any questions?
If not, I just want to take a second to recognize Mayor Johnson's years of hard work as our mayor, and I want you to know that your capable leadership and your dedication to our city have been exemplary, and you have made a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Tourism Business Improvement District Work Plan and Budget. Ms. Medler.
All right, good evening. Diane Medler, Executive Director of Discover Kalispell, which is the division of the Discover Kalispell Montana Chamber. Tonight, I'd like to do a very brief recap of FY25 and the successes we've had, and then later, the groundwork and the framework for what we'll be working on FY26. Let me get this straightened up here. FY25, we've had a productive year, supporting our industry hotel partners and the broader Kalispell business community. We ran a ski package campaign that generated 212 room nights at 13 different TBID hotels between December 20th and March 30th. We awarded 10 event grants with over 66,000 funding to local organizations in support of sports tournaments and events that bring visitors to Kalispell. Our public relations efforts generated over 236 mine and reach, with articles written by travel media and influencers, includes articles such as Affordable Lodging and Nearby Luxury Experiences await this fall in Kalispell. Or 12 Ski Towns to Visit Even If You Don't Ski. 15 Places to Eat in Kalispell, Montana that prove it's a foodie city. Why Kalispell is more than just a gateway to Glacier National Park. Some of the publications that Kalispell was featured in include Forbes, LA Times, and Travel and Leisure, and many more. We advocated for the travel, state travel industry and tourism funding, bed tax, and TBID at the 2025 legislative session. We welcome a new member to the TBID family this year, the Home Two Suites by Hilton, and their ribbon cutting is on June 26, the 4:00 p.m. Invite you to attend. And then we've had the removal of the Greenwood Village Inn and Suites. Discover Kalispell team, of course, we have Lorraine Clarno, who you all know. Also here tonight is Ben Gould, our group sales manager. And then our other team members are Annie Young, who will be starting next week, our marketing communications, as well as Maka, our visitor services coordinator. Our TBID Board of Directors, I do want to recognize Robert Hall with the General Manager of Holiday and Express, and he is our TBID Board Vice Chair. So Discover Kalispell, we're a destination organization, and we are funded by bed tax and TBID. So this slide reflects the operations of our overall organization. We have one marketing plan that's supported by both budgets. The TBID budget prioritizes marketing and development initiatives, so that's what we'll focus on tonight. So destination marketing still remains important and a priority as we are a seasonal destination. The average annual occupancy for hotels 2024 is 56%, which was actually a slight decrease year over year. With the increased lodging inventory from hotels, as well as short-term rentals, decline of Canadian visitors, the impact of Glacier National Park's timed entry vehicle reservation system, we see lodging availability even in summer. Our marketing campaigns balance inspiration and facilitation. We inspire potential travelers to engage with our brand. Then we move them down the travel planning funnel to book a hotel and plan their itinerary. During the summer, we do prioritize visitor education and management, driving visitors to our small businesses and reminding them to recreate responsibly. Initiatives such as the Huckleberry Treat Trail and promoting our guides and outfitters for a worry-free and responsible experience. AI is a tool that travelers are using. I'm sure you all use it as well for your travel planning. So Discover Kalispell is utilizing conversational AI, and we'll continue to do that in FY26. So one example on the screen there that you see is a website that has a travel-related article and a pop-up window about Kalispell. Ask me about Kalispell can pop up. And the information that it served, the information that it answers the questions with is from our website, scrapes our website, so it's in our brand voice, it's accurate information. Example of a paid media, Meta Reel Carousel ad up top. And we also tell our local stories. We highlight folks from the area who serve up those great experiences that our visitors and residents enjoy. We also market to the meeting planner industry, the tour operators, as well as sports, which I'll talk more about here in a moment. That's a group travel leader magazine, and then the Huckleberry Treat Trail. I encourage you all to scan that and follow your way through the trail and all the huckleberry, yummy huckleberry things we have here in Kalispell. So destination development, that's a big priority for the TBID. We invest in promotion and grant funding to increase sports tourism. We drive growth in the meetings and convention segment, strategically maximizing utilization of our two convention properties and also large venues, other large venues in Kalispell. And we attend trade shows for sports and group business. In fact, Ben just got back from a four-day Sevent Connect Conference, meeting with national meeting planners promoting Kalispell. So here's just a sampling of five group business that Ben has been working on and booking, and many more things in the hopper. As I said, sports is a priority for us. We've started to build out our sales and promotion platforms in FY25. FY26 will see the completion and expansion of that. We partner with a variety of local sports organizers to put on high-caliber events. A few are listed there on the slide. An upcoming event that we're looking forward to is the Big Sky Battle. It's a three versus three basketball tournament organized by Purpose Driven Training. That'll be in August at the Parkline Mall parking lot. This event, this will be the first year. It's got really strong potential to grow, to be put on every year and grow, bringing a fun event back down to downtown Kalispell. We're also working on other events, such as bringing the American Junior Golf Association to Montana, looking, working on possibly having an event with these top junior golfers, which would also give an opportunity for Montana youth golfers to participate. And that would be at Northern Pines and/or some parts of that at Buffalo Hill. So that's just some example of what we're doing and providing significant funding, working with our local sports organizers to put on these events and grow them. Destination stewardship is important to our overarching organization and is important to the TBID. We reinvest these visitor-generated taxes and fees into responsible recreation initiatives and community projects that really enhance. Our mantra with this is to enhance the quality of place for residents and the quality of experience for visitors. So we always want to take this community-first approach. We have informational resources for businesses, remote responsible recreation and stewardship. We promote volunteerism and also help to partner and fund some of our local organizations that work to manage our resources, such as the Flathead Trails Association, Flathead Rivers, Flathead River Association, and others. We have a community development grant funding, and we're currently actually seeking projects for that. And we work towards enhancing our hospitality workforce. We have hosted several interns, high school interns, and we're developing a Kalispell Ambassador Program in FY26. So an outline of our budget, FY26 projected revenue is slightly under the current fiscal year. We do have concerns about this upcoming summer season with all the decline in Canadian and a lot of hesitation by domestic travelers with uncertainty of the economy, and just nationally, there's a decline in international travelers. Some data. Our, this outline is our TBID revenue. As you all know, we went to $4 a night when that actually started last August 1st. So in order to really do a year-over-year comparison, we break it out by how many room nights this amount of revenue equals. So for Q1, July through September, since the $4 started in August, we figured that at $3. So you'll see a slight increase in room nights year over year. Q2, we had a slight decrease in room nights. And Q3 was interesting. We actually had a big increase in gross room nights, but we saw a 43% increase in 30-plus days stays during that quarter at our TBID hotels. So when you stay 30 days plus, you don't pay bed tax or TBID. So our revenue reflects actually a decrease in room nights for Q3. As we've talked about, we're cautiously optimistic about the remainder of this quarter and the summer quarter. In FY25, we did have an increase in occupancy every month, except for last July, which was essentially flat through April. We will see a decrease for May, and we'll see how June pans out. We've talked about the concerns we have, also concerns about the wildfires this summer. The decrease in ADR, average daily rate, is interesting. It really is reflecting how consumers are, hotel customers are very rate-sensitive. We're seeing this in the national data, concerns about the economy and personal finances. And then the decrease in supply is still reflecting the loss of the quality in, which closed April of 2024. It's always good to remember where non-resident visitors spend their money. So in Flathead County, restaurant and bar tends to be the number-one segment for our county. Unlike any other county, outfitters and guides comes in as a strong second. So it's great. We, Discover Kalispell, really push our visitors to use our outfitters and guides, and that appears to be working. Hotels and motels, gas, diesel, groceries, snacks, rental cabins, and retail. Domestic credit card spending, you'll see, has kind of been all over the board here in 2025. Should have April data here soon. Our top markets for domestic credit card spending in Kalispell, Missoula, Seattle, LA. We saw the largest increase in spending by the LA area. Bozeman, Helena, and Spokane are some of the top markets. And no surprise, our international visitor card spend continues to decline. Spending by Canadians decreased 39%, whereas spending by Australians increased 24%. About nine, over 90% of our international credit card spending is by Canadians here in Kalispell. No surprise, I'm sure. So trends that we're watching, really see the need to increase our occupancy year-round. We had stepped back, moved back from really promoting summer actively, but we see things are shifting, and we really need to start directing those warm seasons promotions to focus on downtown and other unique experiences in Kalispell, essentially things to do outside the park. We've talked about the Canadians. American travelers are changing their travel-buying behaviors due to uncertainty of economy. 38% of those surveyed by Future Partners, which is a national travel data source, feel that travel is too expensive right now. Over half of the American travelers surveyed are being careful with money due to economic concerns. Nearly 70% plan to use cost-saving strategies when traveling, such as using rewards or loyalty programs, booking budget-friendly accommodations, driving instead of flying, and sticking to a strict travel budget. We are looking forward, in the next four years, the mega events. So this year is the Club World Cup Soccer, and there are games happening in many of our drive-and-flight markets. Next year is the FIFA World Cup, and Seattle and Vancouver, B.C. will be a big travel corridor for that. So there is opportunity to reach these soccer enthusiasts as they're planning their trip and buying their tickets, and having them do a pre-or-post, extend their stay, and come on over to Kalispell. The America 250 next year, which is just generating interest and excitement about traveling and seeing the country, and then the Olympics in 2028. So lots of events ahead that we'll look to see how we can leverage to bring people to our area. So thank you very much.
Quick question for you. Do you know, is there a general commonality or 30-day-plus stays in hotels? Was there any general element to who they were?
Yeah, a lot of construction. We should ask Robert if he has any further intel on that, but usually, construction workers, new residents perhaps that are waiting for a place to stay. It was a, it was a big chunk in that quarter. It was really interesting to see.
Okay, and then on the credit card spend, is that in the 5990103 zip codes, or is that all of the valley?
It's just Kalispell, 59901.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the community development grant funding, you said you have some things in the works, looking for requests. Might as well plug us on that real quick.
Yeah, well, that can be, you know, some examples I have for those kind of projects. We certainly help the KDA how we can with their flowers and Christmas lights and whatnot. It could be, you know, public outdoor art, like murals. It could be bike racks. The two bike racks that were built a couple of years ago, a few years ago now. More amenities like that. It could be improved trail signage at a trailhead. It could be, you know, we're open to ideas, things that really make Kalispell a more vibrant and enticing place to visit, helps visitors get around, and also makes it great for us as residents.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to give the council comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening or ask to step forward, state your name, and give your comments to us.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and councilor members. My name is Joan Aronberg. I live in Whitefish. I moved to Montana 34 years ago, and I love Montana. And Montana is all about, somebody stopped on the side of the road, pull over, how you, you know, what can I do to help my neighbor? We lost that on Saturday. Kalispell, Whitefish, our whole state has seen hate flyers, movements of hate. Saturday, White Lives Matter showed up early. Everybody was out in force because people wanted to exercise their free, their right to public opinion and state their, you know, have their expression of free speech. As I pulled up, I was not going to go because, and after Senate Majority Leader was shot dead in her home with her husband, I said, no, I have to go. The sad, the worst part about that, it was a police officer disguised. And so that leads me to, I pull up to drop off tables in a cooler, and I'm in the middle of a whole entire flurry of an arrest, and an elderly gentleman is being hustled across the park, and he was not treated well. He was in pain. He was expressing that pain. He was really hustled around. A young gentleman was also being arrested and put into a police car in front of me, and I said, are you all right? What happened? And he said, well, I, I made this expression, which we've seen on flags and banners for the last eight years in our state, from the other side complaining about the previous president. And this gentleman was complaining about the current president and was arrested on a public sidewalk in a public park with a permit. That's, Kalispell, when I volunteered down here, right next to the Kalispell Police Station, all the police officers were so nice. That day, there were people out that I did not recognize Montana at all, telling- Telling people to shush up because the officers were going to take cameras from people photographing an incident? That's not right. That's not Montana. But it's also not Kalispel, and it's not who we are. And we're at a risk right now. And we can either be welcoming to everybody and our workers of all stripes that we need and our community, or we can put up barriers and tell people not to come. But you all had the issue of the Friday night drives, and you talked about, I believe, blowing smoke and blowing coal, whatever it is. But when trucks purposely do that to citizens, come on. You know, is that treating your neighbor like we want? So I ask you to consider that one item as, hey, let's not have that on our public streets. And also, let's talk about de-escalation training for your Kalispel Police Department. Because I did not see that at all. And I was, a lot of people were pretty upset. And I know we can do better, and I know this town can do better, and I know Montana can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan Ellis. I was here a month ago to speak about the Main Street Improvement Project. I live in Quorum now, I used to live in Kalispel. But Kalispel is still my city, even though I live out in the woods. This is what I consider to be my city. So I wanted to keep an open mind about Kalispel, to give it an honest shot. Last Friday night, we came down to the college, to the 2020 Grand Concert. Great, beautiful college, beautiful venue, that was nice. We were having a good night, so we said, okay, you know, let's go downtown, let's have a drink, let's have some food. You know, maybe my impressions of Kalispel were wrong. And I was wrong. Like, I admit, I was wrong about my impressions, because it was way worse. Was anybody else downtown Friday night?
Dress the council.
Did you walk around Friday night?
Dress the council, please.
Council, sorry. It was really bad. It was nonstop revving of engines, black smoking people, you know, the big trucks going up and down Main Street. Soon as I got out of my car, somebody heckled me. I don't know exactly what they said, but I don't think it was nice. So we were going to go out to buy us, have a beer on the roof. So the last thing we want to do is be outside. So we sat inside, and I kind of watched what was going on outdoors. It wasn't very long, there's this family of four, you know, mom, dad, son, daughter, who were just trying to cross the street, and they were getting back to their car. And you have this truck that was pulling out and, you know, loudly, you know, jammed on their horn, you know, beeping at these people for no reason, for just standing out there. And I see the dad go like this to the truck. And these weren't kids, these were adults in a fancy truck, you know. And then the daughter does this, you know, this teenage girl. So it's not a good environment, like this, you know, free-for-all for intimidation, for malice, people coming to your city that probably don't even live here. You know, creating that environment on a Friday night. It's about 8 o'clock. So I watched some more. There's this girl in her twenties, probably trying to ride a bike down the street. She makes it a couple of blocks, and then very quickly afterwards, some, you know, car comes up revving their engine behind her. So instinctively, she jumps up on the sidewalk, almost hits a couple pedestrians. You know, like, it's not inviting. Like, you've got all these people that are trying to do wonderful things for the city, have plants, you know, run campaigns to bring visitors here. And then you have that garbage going on on a Friday night. You know, those people, those four people won't be back. I won't be back on a Friday night. And it's sad, like, I care about Kalispel, I want it to be better. But I think there's, to me, it goes back to this Main Street issue, which is a hot contentious issue. And I want to thank, you know, the people that kind of thought through this and realized that there are better ways to do a Main Street. Like, if you want people to come down and shop in your city, it needs to be invited. Like, it's not good for business. The way, I know a few business owners, and I know their rents are going up, their foot traffic is going down. So long-term, what does that mean? Like, you know, how long are they going to be able to stay in business? What's Kalispel going to look like years from now? If you continue to prioritize people driving through your city to go somewhere else versus people that want to spend time in there? I mean, there's example cities all over the country, all over the world. There's example cities in Montana that do this better, that have a more enjoyable space, you know, safer for pedestrians. But to me, like, voting down this Main Street Improvement Project, like, I don't know the details, you know, exactly what was needed or what it was going to do, but something needs to be done about Main Street. You know, there's no pedestrian bump outs. You know, First Avenue East has it, First Avenue West has pedestrian bump out, something. So it's less distance for pedestrians to get across, it's a little bit safer. And I get it, you guys are elected officials, like, you want to do what's popular. You want to do what's going to get you votes, obviously. But, you know, what's popular right now is not necessarily what's right. And I think maybe that's the problem, is that people have a hard time seeing, you know, if we put up with a little bit of inconvenience now to fix these streets, to do something different, it'll pay off for our kids later. And so it's not a popular thing, like redoing Main Street. A lot of people don't want the inconvenience of, you know, I don't want my drive to be longer. There's already a lot of traffic. So, but it doesn't do, like, Main Street right now is not good for people driving from point A to point B. It's not fast, and it's really not good for pedestrians. So it does neither thing well. So, you know, do we just leave it and let the businesses die? And just let it be more congested, or do we try to do something to fix it? Like, in ideal world, maybe First Avenue West is southbound only. Maybe First Avenue East is northbound only. And then that leaves Main Street to be more pedestrian-friendly and business-friendly, you know, to where people want to go shop and walk around. But anyways, I thank you for listening to my rant. If you think I'm full of nonsense, take your family downtown. Bring your mom downtown, bring your kids downtown. If you've got a teenage daughter, bring her on a Friday night. And see what kind of colorful comments and black smoke and revving of engines they all get. Because that's what we got, that's how I, you know, we felt. So I would love to come spend my money in a city that was more pedestrian-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? See, then we're going to close, and we're going to move on to the public hearing this evening, Police and Fire Impact Fees. Counsel will accept public comments regarding the council's intent to consider a proposed increase to the police and fire impact fees. Please step forward, give your name and comments. Not all at once.
I hope I'm not the only one. My name's Kisa Davison. I live at, on Sixth Avenue East here in Kalispel. I'm also a business owner, property owner downtown. I would, I know that our fire and police have an incredible amount of pressure on them to cover our growing need for services. But I would just request that counsel consider alternates to raising impact fees. It is already very difficult to provide affordable housing in this community. It is even more difficult to provide commercial properties that are reasonable. And if we're going to continue to develop, then at least let's not make it harder for our developers, builders, and even our current property owners to do improvements and expand their businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to the first action item this evening, Resolution 6257, Intent to Hold a General Municipal Election. This resolution considers calling for a general election for November 4th, 2025, for the open Kalispel mayor, city council, and municipal court judge positions. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel. Per Montana code annotated, we've started bringing this resolution before counsel to identify the intent to hold the elections. Previously, we've sought guidance from counsel in terms of doing it through a mail-only versus the polling. Counsel has traditionally done it through the polling. Did receive a letter requested from the county with some rationale for a way to do it, mail-only, so that is definitely something that can be considered. I know in previous discussions, it was just kind of a question without any other supporting components related to it. I know they put some of that in the letter, so counsel can make that alteration if they so choose. So, and I think we may have some public comment related to that from the county. But with that, Resolution 6257 is before the counsel.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I want to follow up on that letter that we received. And with previous elections for municipal elections, have we been the only standout of doing in-person with everybody else doing mail ballot?
I don't believe so. I can't guarantee that, but I think I know someone that can, if I can defer.
Okay, great, yeah. I'll follow up with questions.
All right, public comment.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm here, so I might as well. My name is Paula Buff. I'm the election manager. So I'm just kind of here to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Go ahead and ask.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start with that first one, so, yeah.
Yeah, so typically, Kalispel is the standout.
Okay.
Yeah, so the city of Columbia Falls in Whitefish, I think they did a resolution probably three or four years ago that just said, across the board, we're always going to do mail elections.
And then, so that would mean then, well, we don't typically have a county bond, I guess, on the ballot with us. Would this be the first election, at least in recent times, that we would, a voter would receive two ballots, our ballot plus the bond ballot?
Unfortunately, that's kind of been the case for the county, I think, as a whole. I just came on board in March of 2024, or 2024, so like a little over a year ago. My practice, kind of beginning with this last special purpose and school election, is I just combined everything onto a ballot, one ballot. And whatever district or, you know, area you lived in, the, if you had an issue that was on the ballot that was for that particular area, you received a ballot with that issue and potentially a broader issue. I think in the past, it has been a situation where you would get, you know, a Columbia Falls ballot, a Kalispel ballot, you know, that sort of thing. So my idea, that what I'm going to do for this upcoming general for the county and for Columbia Falls and Whitefish both, they'll all appear on one ballot. So not, obviously, not everyone will, you know, not every race will be on a ballot. So there will be, for instance, some people in the outlying areas that will just get the county bond. And then those people who are in the city of Columbia Falls will receive their ballot that's got their trustees on it, as well as the county bond, and so on and so forth with Whitefish. So my suggestion to the counsel is to allow the city of Kalispel to run an election combined with the other two municipalities and the county as well, such that each elector would only receive one ballot, one affirmation envelope. It's one and done.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's what concerned me about your letter, which you stated, that if there's two different ballots and people put both ballots in one envelope, then the whole thing gets thrown out.
Yes, yeah. Unfortunately, that's just the way it works. So absentee voting and all-mail elections, you, you know, each elector gets one ballot in one envelope. And we receive it back, we scan it, it goes, you know, to give voter credit in that particular election. And then we, you know, it kind of goes through the pipeline. So that's signature verification and then separation. Well, when we're opening up those envelopes and you have that anonymity, and you've got two ballots in there, and they're completely different ballot styles, you can't just pick and choose, oh, we're going to use this one, or oh, we're going to use that one. At that point, you don't even know who had turned that ballot in, which is good. Then you don't know how a person voted. But you also can't cherry pick like that, so it has to be rejected.
So I guess, and you probably can't answer this question, but my, you know, the biggest concern is disenfranchising voters out there. There's going to be some voters who are used to voting in person that when we switch up and go to all-mail, they either aren't aware of that switch up and don't wind up voting, or they don't vote because they just, they don't trust the mail system or whatever. They won't vote if it's not in person. So you lose those folks. But then if you have folks who are losing the vote because they made this mistake of two ballots in one envelope, and I'm just wondering, is there any way to estimate or try to assess which of those two scenarios is more likely to result in, you know, a bigger population not voting? Because that, to me, is the deciding factor.
Sure. I'll start with the first comment about disenfranchisement. I believe that in an all-mail election, everyone's getting a ballot, regardless of whether they're a poll voter or an absentee voter. If the person who is a registered poll voter wants to vote their ballot in person, we have poll booths set up at my office.
But they won't, they won't know that. I mean, you can get that information, but they'll be playing people who won't know that because they're used to going to the fairgrounds.
But they'll have a ballot in their hand. And if they want to come into our office and cast a ballot at a voting booth and get an "I voted" sticker and turn their ballot in. In fact, I would say that in the 2024 general election, I would say the first wave, probably the moment people started receiving ballots, a good majority of them were poll voters, because there was that messaging that was there, get out, vote early, that sort of thing. So we would have people come in who were poll voters and say, I'm a poll voter, but I want to vote right now, and I want to vote in person, I want to get it done right away. And in those scenarios, we would just give the person a ballot. They would go to the, you know, the poll booths that we had set up, they'd vote their ballot and turn it in. So, you know, I don't know as far as probability when it comes to, you know, a person putting, you know, multiple ballots into one affirmation envelope if they did end up receiving two ballots. But what I can tell you is, in the last Kalispel election in 2023, like I alluded to in the memo that I had written to the counsel, I think 263 voters showed up at the polling place. And I think that by having an all-mail election, I think you're doing the exact opposite of disenfranchising people. I think you're reaching out to every single active eligible voter and providing them the opportunity to vote without having to narrow it down to one day in a specific time window or any of that. They can take their time, vote it, and like I said, come into my office, vote it in person, turn it in. The only difference is, they don't have a night, you know, a table of nice little old ladies handing them a ballot, but it's the exact same thing.
Yeah, no, I definitely personally prefer mailing. I think it's a lot easier and makes a lot of sense. But I definitely have talked to a lot of voters who, or at least some voters, who just absolutely adamant that they're ongoing vote in person. But last question, in terms of the cost, I know there was a cost estimate for us to go with a poll voting. We've done this in the past. I assume that that cost is the same as it's been in the past? Or is there some reason why this year it would be higher than what we've normally paid for?
So I think I threw out in that memo roughly $2.15 a ballot. I have been trying to wrap my head around the per-ballot cost of running elections in Flathead County since I arrived here over a year ago. I can say with pretty good certainty that the billing was not necessarily done completely accurately in the past. I believe the last bill that you guys received in 2023 was roughly in the neighborhood of $30,000. I would suspect it'll be that, if not more, just because material costs have gone up, you know, all kinds of different scenarios. And I just, I, in my own mind, I don't know that it would necessarily be worth it as far as in terms of voter turnout. I think that was roughly like 4% in 2023. And I feel like you would probably have a better voter turnout if everyone received a ballot in the mail that was eligible to vote.
Thank you.
Why two ballots for in-person?
What's that?
Why do we have two ballots for in-person and everybody else has one for mailing?
Two ballots?
Why isn't the county on the, and the city together on one ballot?
That's what I'm doing.
So, so how could they put two different?
Because if you guys choose to have a polling place, the way the statewide voter database works, you have to set up the election either as an all-mail election or a polling place election, because there's a little bit different set of rules. When you have a polling place, you have to generate registers, and then when you run your list of absentee labels, it only pulls the absentee voters, and everyone else is left off that list. So if those individuals that are registered poll voters don't actually go to the polling place, it's, it's just like a no-call, no-show. Whereas if you were to put it all into an all-mail election, all of those people would get a ballot regardless. So I guess, it, you have to generate precinct registers and, or in this instance, district res, registers, so it, it's two completely separate beasts.
That, it still doesn't make any sense to me. It sounds like the state needs to fix their issue, not, not, you know, there, there's going to be people in different areas that prefer this, and I'm sure we're not the only city in Montana that has in-place, that, that it has polling places on municipal elections. So, I, it, the, the chance of somebody having their ballot thrown out because they mistakenly put both into one envelope is pretty high. I mean, that should be avoided at all costs, they should all be on one ballot.
Agreed.
Yeah, so.
But you can't, you, that is not the way you can run it in ElectMT, the statewide voter database.
That needs to be fixed, then, not?
Yeah, that's, that's something you got to take up with the Secretary of State, I'm just a little guy following the rules.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi. I, I just going to start this by saying, I, I like to go to the polls. If anything, just to talk with all the.
Little old lady.
Folks that work there, right? I just, I love that, right? However, is there a larger issue if we were to continue to go within-person that could impact the county's bond issue that they want to put on there with percentages of voters within the district?
You're asking me to pontificate on whether or not I think that is going to have an adverse effect on the county, and I'm not sure that I feel comfortable doing that.
That's fine.
But I will say that the city of Kalispell has 14,800 and change active electors, and if they get one ballot that's got all of their candidate races, and then they get a second ballot that's just the county bond, there's probably going to be some voter confusion.
And there is a limit that has to be attained by the bond voter within the county.
There has always been a limit, there was a bill that was talked about, I'm not sure that that ever passed, but we did kind of take a look at the math, and some of the bonds and levies that were ran in the past would never have passed based on that methodology. To my knowledge, the governor hasn't signed anything, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
Don't hold me to that.
And I'm, I'm just going to say, you're doing an amazing job.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Any other questions? Any other public comment on this issue? Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
It's almost like a mini-work session. See no public comment, right? Okay, I'd like to counsel for a motion. Mr. Nunley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to pass Resolution 6257, a resolution calling for a general election to be held on November 4th, 2025, for the open positions of Kalispell mayor, city councilors in wards one, two, three, and four, and Kalispell municipal judge.
Okay, motion second, discussion on the motion. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yeah, so I'm of the same mindset, I have always liked going to the polls, and, you know, it's about the drive, going there, I've always took my daughter with me, um, just to kind of show, show her, you know, how the process worked and everything. But definitely over, you know, the last three terms that I've ran, you see that starting to really wane away, and not, not the in-place polling not being used as much. I do appreciate what was said about, if you still want to do it, you can still go to the election department and do it in-person, so it provides that avenue for people that may not trust, you know, they're, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't put something that's so valuable to me in the mail like that, I'd take it down there, but it gives option for people to go through and do that. So, um, I want to support this, to go to all-mail.
So we need to make a.
You need to make an amendment.
Make the amendment. Well, I'll wait and see what everybody else thinks, then. Well, I can make it, I'll make the amendment.
Can't discuss it till you do, you know that. In 12 years.
We'll just switch them.
Got, okay.
Yeah. So I guess I just go through and make an amendment that we would go to all-mail and ballot for, for our election, for the city, city elections.
Second.
Okay, well, there's a quick seconds, two seconds, two seconds to get seconds. Okay, motion to amend to add.
And I won't discuss.
Now you want to discuss?
No, I won't discuss.
You won't discuss, you won't? Does anyone else want to discuss that? To amend, Mr. Dowd.
I, I strongly oppose going to a mail-only system. I think that it does a whole slew of things when you do that. First off, people end up usually voting much earlier than they would vote if they went to the polls, so the time that you have to influence people is much shorter. We have like the longest period of time to register, to file for office for a municipal position. We have like twice, more than twice as long as the President of the United States has to put in his candidacy. We have that, we have like a huge, long time to do that, but then you're shortening the time that we have to actually influence people, and, uh, believe it or not, people know less about municipal, uh, municipal government, municipal, you know, what's going on in the city and who these people are than they do for these larger positions. So, um, I, I don't like, you know, first off, the, the experience of actually going to vote makes you feel like you did something. Uh, I, I don't like the mail-in piece of it, that's just a personal preference, and I won't impose my will there on everybody else, but there's other items to consider, like historically, when you are in a tight race, you can have poll watchers at the, at the, at the, at the polling places, you can kind of gauge how you're doing throughout the day, you can get, get on the phone and start calling people, hey, did you go vote today, uh, whatever, you know, to, to make up for that, uh, to get people that are your supporters to, to get out. You can't do that kind of thing in a mail-in situation. I just, I just, you know, there's something un-American about only doing mail-in voting, I just don't get it.
Other discussion on that motion? Ouch. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I, you know, in the past, I've supported in-person, because I do know those folks who really want to do in-person, I want to respect that. But as I mentioned in my questions, that the most important thing for me is not to have people who want to vote and have their vote not counted, or they don't vote for some reason, and so I, I'm concerned about folks who vote in-person and going all-mail, and they'll lose that opportunity, but I think, and without any data, unfortunately, but I would think the number of people who put two ballots in one envelope and lose their vote because of that mistake is probably a lot higher, at least in this first election, where it's going to be confusing. And so I really, I mean, that's the driving force for me in terms of thinking about this, is that, um, that risk of people making a mistake and losing their vote is really high, in my opinion, um, in my guess. And then you add on the fact that it costs taxpayer money for us to go to poll, you know, do a poll thing when no way, no way else in the county does it. So I think I will support a, a mail-in only, um, in this case. If there, if the bond wasn't on there, then I, I probably wouldn't, but.
Again, second?
Well, I, I'm raising my hand, so I can let everybody else go first, so.
Go ahead, I'll give you a second.
My turn. So I do agree with you, it is confusing, and it sounds like Secretary of State Kristi Jacobson needs to fix her stuff, right? That, having that kind of, uh, a problem with an in-person vote is, is ridiculous. And the, the ballots should be able to be, they should be able to figure out who's in-person, who's mail-in only, and you get one ballot for everything. I mean, they could do it for a federal election, we get federal, state, county, and, you know, other items on, on the same ballot, and that's in-person, right? You're not going to go to all-mail in for, for that, you know, that election, so, anyway, I, I just, I still strongly oppose it, so, um, I guess you know where I'm going to vote.
Well, go ahead, I'm enjoying the show.
I, I, and I agree that the state doesn't even fix it, but my confidence level in them fixing it by November, I, or, you know, I mean, they basically would have it fixed by now, right? So it's not going to happen, so that's the reality of it.
Any other discussion in this age of convenience? Because you all know my position, and I just absolutely hate mail-in only. I think really that should be a national holiday, where we all go vote in-person, and I'm adamant about that, that we should do that, and eliminate the mail-in voting unless you have a good reason, like we used to have with the absentee ballots. The fact that we want to make it convenient, and I still go back and remember how many people died to give us this, it wasn't really convenient for them, so that's a little bit of my rant, and I've done it year in and year out, so I really struggle with mail-in voting. So, let's have a roll call vote. On the amendment.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
No.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
As a principal, no. Back to the original now, to holding a general municipal election, I think, want to make sure my name's not on it, right? Good. We're good to go. Any other discussion on the motion as amended? Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
As a true politician, I was against it before, I was for it, so aye. We have to have an election, so. All right, creation of special improvement districts for Morning Star and Green Acres, these resolutions consider creation of SIDs for the purpose of undertaking water and sewer improvements in these communities. Resolution 6258 deals with SID 346, Morning Star Sewer. Resolution 6259, SID 347, Morning Star Water. And Resolution 6260, SID 348, for Green Acre Sewer. Will do is ask for a staff report on all three at the same time, and public comment on all three at the same time, because they're all so closely related. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as you know, this has been a project before council on numerous action items with support for these grant applications and accepting the grant applications. This is the next step in that project to cover special improvement districts for the remainder cost portion of it. So to go a little bit more in-depth on the staff report, I'll turn it over to Jared Nygrun with Development Services.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this has been before you a number of times for potential grants that are really just a pass-through municipalities are the conduit for some of these grants through, through the state or federal government. The, the city has received, I believe, a little over $3 million in grants for this particular project, but as time goes on, construction costs go up, it's likely the, the project, one of the, the Morning Star project is out to bid, and the Green Acres is going out to bid as we speak, but, um, just knowing that with the costs, likely may need a little more money, the state has reserved through the state revolving loan fund, um, some monies for this particular projects, which, like the grants, need to go through the city. Given this project is an affordable community, um, the grant, or sorry, the loans would be up to 75% forgivable, so those dollar amounts you see there are likely very inflated. A, they're inflated numbers to begin with, just to make sure that we were not lowballing the, the special improvement district amount, but as the bids come in, and as the loan documents, working with the state funnel through, and they can calculate loan forgiveness, those dollar amounts will be much lower than that. Once again, so the, the communities have submitted to the city a waiver right to protest SID. The city hasn't done a special improvement or special improvement district, sorry, I'm saying SID, um, like everybody knows what that is, but, um, in a long time, city doesn't do them often, but in this case, it would be backed by the properties themselves through a levy or a special assessment on the taxes. So the general city taxpayer wouldn't be at risk in this scenario, it would just be on the property itself, because these are resident-owned communities, they're under single ownership, kind of like an HOA, so essentially, you have all the, the mobile home park owners within it that are paying, um, would be paying it, so it's not just one individual, you know, some of the communities have 30-plus mobile homes in it. So, uh, with that, we would recommend the approval of these, and then in a, a future council action, there'd be a bond resolution or, that would come with this, with those exact dollar amounts. So at this point, it doesn't fiscally attach the city to anything, it just creates the SID, it's one of those stepping stones. Once the final dollar amounts, loan forgiveness is all calculated, there'll be a bond resolution before council. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment? Okay, look for a motion on Resolution 62, oh?
Go ahead, John.
Good evening, thank you, Council. I, you, you beat me to the, uh, the, the no-public comments. So, John Gass with WGM Group just wanted to offer availability for any questions that come up on the project. We did meet with both communities over the last few weeks and went through the resolutions with them, so there was, uh, much support from the communities for these projects to move forward, and much need for the communities as their existing sewer and/or water systems are, um, kind of in dire need of repair, so, uh, important projects for the, the communities as the city as a whole, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Okay. Resolution 6258. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 6258, a resolution creating a special improvement district, Morning Star Community Improvements, District Number 346, and authorizing execution of federal and state grants in connection thereto.
Second, thank you, Ms. Carlson, discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Resolution 6259. Mr. Dowd? He likes to talk tonight, Mr. Nunley.
Fine.
Senator, I move Resolution Number 6259, a resolution creating a special improvement district, Morning Star Community Improvements, District Number 347, and authorizing execution of federal and state grants in connection thereto.
Second.
Second, motion second, discussion on the motion. Roll call vote?
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Resolution 6260. Ms. Carlson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move Resolution 6260, uh, sorry. Sorry about that. I move Resolution, um, creating special improvement district, Green Acres Community Improvements, District Number 348, and authorizing execution of federal and state grants in connection thereto.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Huntie? Counselor Huntie?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. All right. Motion to authorize a continuing resolution for the City of Kalispell for fiscal year 2026 and preliminary budget, and call for a public hearing. This item considers authorizing limited funds from this budget and calling for a public hearing on July 7, 2025. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as you are all aware, the fiscal year starts July 1st for fiscal year 26. However, we do not get valuations from the state until usually about the first week in August. So, that kind of leaves the challenge of adopting the final budget. So, we've made it a practice to really do, as Mayor Johnson said, and essentially pass a continuing resolution to authorize limited expenditure of funds. Usually, we hold off on anything that's not in an established work plan through a rate schedule, or something that we know is going to be plugged in until the final budget's adopted. So, if we can make any changes, we still have that ability as we get to that meeting in August. But, this would essentially authorize that limited expenditure of funds, and set the public hearing for July 7th.
Questions for staff? Any public comment? Motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we authorize the expenditure of funds from the fiscal year 2026 preliminary budget necessary for day-to-day operations of the city, and to schedule a public hearing for Monday, July 7th, 2025.
Second.
That you, Mr. Graham?
Yeah.
All right. Motion second, any discussion? Want to amend the chairs out while we got a chance, or should we do that later? Yeah, roll call vote?
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Resolution 6261, Non-Union Employee Salary Adjustment. This resolution considers adopting an updated 20-step pay matrix and an annual step increase for eligible employees. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, also as part of the new fiscal year, we do pass a resolution authorizing the wages for employees, and has been written in the memo, and as we talk about every year, we have a market-based system, and we've been incorporating that well, geez, over 10 years, almost 12 years now. And I have to say, probably one of the best practices we've done to maintain wages with the market that we look out. It's one of those cases that even if we're off a little bit, one way or the other, at every third year, it always takes care of itself that next third year, and has just given a good amount of consistency across the organization. So, really have appreciated council's commitment to that. We'll point out, as we discussed at the previous meeting, I have incorporated the elected officials in it. As I've said it over a year, if you do not address it in some manner, you will just continue following further and further behind. So, that's incorporated. So, the only one it does not apply to is the city manager and the municipal judge, who are on a January 1st by resolution and contract. That almost will essentially be about the same thing, because it does the average of all municipal employees. So, we got basically that right here with this in, in general. So, with that, we'd recommend approval of the resolution and adopting that base wage and authorization on the step increase for those that were eligible for it. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Questions for staff? Any public comment in Resolution 6261? Motion? Mr. Graham?
I move Resolution Number 6261, Resolution Adjusting the Salary and Compensation of the City Officials, City Council Members, Supervisors, and All Other Non-Union Employees pursuant to Title VII, Chapter 4, Part 42 MCA commencing on the date indicating herein.
Second.
Second. Ms. Carlson? Discussion on the motion?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead, Mr. Graham.
One last time. I'm gonna make a motion to amend to remove the language for city council members, city, or council members, from the resolution.
Motion to strike council members from the motion?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment? Mr. Graham?
I know this is not the preferred method that most staff would like us to move forward with as it pertains to, you know, council pay, as it does not keep up with the average for other cities and stuff. But, my philosophy on that is I don't care about that, because it's an elected position. And so, you know, the thing is, is I never wanted to go through, or would ever want to go through and vote to give myself a raise. If the future council wants to go and do this next year, they can certainly do that. So, for me, right now, I'm being consistent with where I've always been. With that in there, I wouldn't be able to support this, so.
Any other discussion? Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Graham. You know, it's, it's always the, the worst view of a council that you can get when they vote themselves a raise, right? The same thing with the state legislature, when they vote themselves a raise. You know, this, this is a service in my mind, and, you know, I feel privileged that the, the people of my ward voted for me and put me in this position. And, you know, when they do that, they, they have no concept in their head of any money attached to this position. This position is me representing them. And, I, you know, I appreciate that the council has done this year after year that I've been on it. We've always struck this out. I do understand the argument for raising it. I, one of the reasons I really don't like this one is because it just puts it on a rate schedule where it would increase over time without, you know, the council going with another resolution to amend it. Anyway, I, I think I'm in full support of the amendment.
Other discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have Mr. Fisher here this evening, who is the most vocal advocate for this, and his, try not to put too much words in his mouth, but his desire to, you know, see more people run for office by making it so it's financially feasible for, for folks who may be struggling more financially. As I've said, what's important to me is not, you know, an increase in, in the pay or anything like that, but that there is a formula that takes it away from a vote from council. So, we're not deciding on whether or not to do a raise or whatnot, but that there's just a process for it. And I had proposed several times, every time this comes up, that it have a two-part component. It's looking at not only the average of the different cities of similar size, but also looking at the COLA adjustment, and whichever is lower of the two, then that's what you apply. So, it has that downward pressure on it. So, you try to address that issue of it always going up. You have kind of a pressure to, to keep a, keep a cap on that in case one or the other spikes, right? And kind of a feeling that, also that if this amount of pay is, was the adequate pay 20-plus years ago, when Ms. Gabriel first came on council, I don't know when it was, it's so long ago, then obviously, you know, after several decades, it's probably not quite right now. But, having said that, I also think is one of those issues that it shouldn't be a razor-thin vote. I mean, the council should be, if not totally united, fairly united on it. And so, given the, the divide on council on it, maybe it is better it's taken up in future years with, with a different perspective on council. So, I will, I will vote again, vote for the motion and postpone it for another year.
Other discussion? Mr. Nunley?
Well, I'm willing to take this step, because the other step I was thinking is, boy, I'd really like some cleanup on sidewalks, and I know we're coming up with about $63,000 real quick. So, I, I will agree with this for now, because I know the other one that I would amend wouldn't make it anywhere, probably.
Okay. Other discussion? Say it one last time, because this will be the 12th time I've been able to say it, and my last time I'll be able to say it. Much like the voting, I didn't do this for the money, I didn't do this for the pay. Do this for community service, and I ask everyone who asks, you know, well, how much do you get paid? And say, well, it's not very much. I didn't even realize I got paid when I got elected the first time. And then I turn and I look and I ask people who volunteer on nonprofit boards, what do you get paid on a nonprofit board? Nothing. Why do they do it? It's a sense of service. So, I've carried that sense of service, I've tried to instill that upon my children, through my family, and I think it's important to instill that within the community. So, I'm going to vote in favor of the amendment to strike, like I have all the other times that we had it on there. So, with that, can I have a roll call vote on the amendment to Resolution 6261?
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
No.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Back to the original Resolution 6261. Any discussion on that? Roll call vote?
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dahlman?
Aye.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. City Manager Report?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, first of all, appreciation for sticking with the market-based component for the organization. It just makes it a lot easier and gives opportunities to continue to go out and see where we're at. Upcoming, as I stated before, we're going to have some technical component work being done on some of our tricasting equipment. So, that will be sent out, which eliminates the ability to do video components with it. So, we're going to take off the next work session, which is next week, and then the week after is a fifth Monday. So, that'll give us, hopefully, unless there's disruptions in shipping and the like, time to get it back in for the July 7th meeting. So, our next meeting will be on July 7th. Tomorrow, I will be attending the municipal summit in Libby, where hopefully, we're going to be fully made aware of consequences of legislation as it relates to this year's fiscal budget. You know, there's some different components that I honestly don't quite know how they're going to incorporate, when they're talking about reduction in one class, but increase in the other class, and how that interplays with the county versus the city. It has some overlap in terms of jurisdiction and classes. So, hopefully, we find all that out, because we're going to have, like I say, about, you know, usually around 10 days to get the numbers and get that final budget back before council. And the only other thing, just a reminder that we'll adjourn right after this and go into executive session.
Anything from council? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, you know, just, I guess, a final comment on the mail-in versus the, you know, we decided to go to a mail-in vote, and some people might be surprised about the hills I decide to stand and then take, and die on, right? This is the biggest right that you have as American, as an American citizen, is to vote, right? People really don't understand that that is, that is your biggest right. You, you are choosing your government, the people that represent you. And when we water that down, you never get it back. I mean, it's like every little right that we give away. Anything that we give away for like a safety concern or anything, you know, whatever it happens to be, you never get those back. They never, you, people don't change their mind next year and say, okay, well, we'll do in person this year instead. So, you know, it's, it's a little bit disheartening to, to see that we went this way. You know, I, I just think of the people that would be up in arms if this was, you know, a state or federal election that they did this with. You know, people really kind of don't have that big of a reaction to a municipal election. But, it's, it is, it's watering it down, and we'll never see it come back. So, a little bit of a sad farewell to in-person voting for municipal elections. The other thing I would like to just point out, or to, to comment on, is we heard some, some comments today about maybe two different sides that were represented on Saturday, right? And, you know, if, if you have that kind of animosity toward your fellow community member, you're wasting your life. It's a, you're not going to be on your deathbed going, well, I'm really proud that I blew smoke in the face of those protesters on that, on that day, right? That's, that's not something you're going to look back on and be proud of. You know, we, we also, when we do that, we place the people that, that are in charge of our safety, our, our officers, in a terrible position. You know, and, and with today's monitoring of everybody, the cell phones everywhere, taking videos of everything, it, things can be taken out of context, and it's just a terrible position to put each other in. Now, the funny thing is, you know, if you, if you sit down at a table with that same, those same people that were having issues, you can find much more areas of common ground than you can of opposition. It's, it's just sad to me that we see people going to these extremes for, you know, political reasons or ideological reasons. But, I would love to see people be able to sit down and have a discussion, instead of this shouting, yelling, people getting arrested, you know, people being rude to each other. And, you know, hopefully, we can start stressing that neighborly sense going forward. You know, we hear it from the council all the time, we have very different views up here. There's some of us wildly different than others, like myself, right? But, we have good discussions about it. We don't, you know, we don't bicker and, and we don't, you know, we're not rude to each other. We can act like this every day, and whether you're online or in person, you just go forth with a, a heart of kindness first, and see where that leads you. Because, you know, like, my mom told me more, over and over again, you catch more flies with honey, right, than vinegar. So, I hope people can keep that in mind going forward. And you see things going on around the world here, and if there's any time in history that we need to be coming together instead of breaking apart, it's now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Hunter?
I'll just say, I agree with your sentiments about Saturday's events, and thank you. Well said.
Anything, Mr. Graham?
Yeah, so, election filing deadline has passed, and proud to say I kept myself away from the election department there for a while. It was touch and go there for a little while, but I, you know, mentioned back in January, and then again in a article that I wasn't going to run for mayor, but also I wasn't going to run for city council. And now that that deadline has passed, it's like a huge weight off my shoulder. And I certainly look forward to the next year's coming, where I'll be able to go. And, you know, one of my biggest reasons for not filing again is, really is, it's the overall political atmosphere out there now. You're in a position up here where a lot of times, you're making a bad decision, because you don't want to make a really bad decision. And then you have all the social media talking about the decision you made, and why, you know, have no idea why you made it. They didn't pay attention at all. And I'm just tired of that. So, I feel like after 12 years, I've put my time in. For everybody that supported me, I thank them, and for everybody that was going through and really pushing me hard to run for mayor, I'm sorry that I disappointed you. But, I'm looking forward to getting a good portion of my life back, because when you're, when you're up here, when you're out and about doing your daily job, your daily job, a lot of this gets taken up in your daily job, too, where you're constantly thinking- a lot of this gets taken up in your daily job too, where you're constantly thinking about stuff that's going on up here. So it'll be nice to decouple from that and go play golf. I've mentioned that and I'm serious, but I'm going to go play golf more. So anyhow.
Anything else?
Okay, it was stated that it doesn't look good to give yourself a raise, but with so many new people running for office this year, I voted no for the amendment because I'm thinking of future council members. So, yeah, it might not look good to give yourself a raise, but when you have so many other people that could be sitting up here instead of Chad and Jessica and Mark, that's, that was my reason. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, man, I could go on forever about a number of things tonight, but we do have an executive session coming up. I think I'm just going to do a couple of quick comments on this. It's, you know, Saturday, the events, I think Mr. Dowd well said, there are a lot of differing opinions. It's one of the things that makes this country great. And having civil dialogue is important. The other side of this is, we also have to understand that when people get together and emotions are so high, you do put law enforcement in a really tough position. So I appreciate everything you guys did because it wasn't easy. And I know you were coordinating with the sheriff and there were a lot of planning meetings that led up to this. And so when we look at the exercise of our, of our rights and the freedom of speech, we also have to understand that just because I can say it, should I say it? And I just ask people to look at that. Would you really say that to your mom? Would you really say that to your dad? Use a litmus test. The other thing, this is one of the things, this is just kind of one of those bones I got to pick. Every time I see it on TV, it drives me nuts and I've seen Republican senators and congressmen and Democratic and we pledge allegiance to the flag. The flag represents a republic, not a democracy. So understand with that republic, we are elected officials. We do represent, but we don't just put our finger up in the air and figure out which way is the wind blowing with public opinion. Because we have to make decisions that aren't necessarily good just for today, but for future generations in the long haul. And sometimes it's really tough to make those decisions because they aren't popular. And I've been on the popular side of things and the unpopular side of things. And you don't really relish those votes, but you do it because it's your obligation as that representative who's been elected to make those tough decisions. Because as we've seen, a group of people all voting for their own best interest will lead a country to ruination faster than anything else. With that, I'm going to move to executive session and
So have you bought a set of clubs?
Do you even own a set of clubs?
I don't.
Do you do that? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Can you take picture? Can I let me get my spots?
Yes, very good.
So, let's go to official.
You ready? Alright.
I'm ready.
I'm gonna reopen the meeting.
Reopen the meeting from executive session. And in honor of former Councilman Wayne Savaroud, I'm gonna gavel the meeting closed with the gavel that he gave me when he moved away.[1798.46][1798.46](gunshot)
Oh![1800.46][1800.46](gunshot)